Okay, welcome everyone. Today is June 10th, 2020. And this is, we are all gathered here for the work session that begins at 5:00. It's just 5:00 now. Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The Board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and to listen to the discussion, but there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the Board are welcome to do so during the Board's regularly scheduled meetings. So, excuse me. I can see that the first, the first thing would be Board Communication. Who would, who would like to, which one of the Commissioners would like to begin that today? Alrighty, I'm going to pick on Commissioner Nebiker.
Hi. So, I wondered what the response was, maybe I missed it, to the letter that came about the racist graffiti.
Looks like Don may have a response for that.
Yeah, Commissioner Ted and the Public Works staff went out and they looked at the bridge and they're working on a plan to remove it, so.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Did you want to have any further comments, Commissioner Nebiker?
Um, not, not right now, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Thompson, would you like to check in with us today?
Sure thing. And I sent that email on to the Sheriff because it seemed to me that maybe he'd be interested in that as well. So, just kind of looping law enforcement into it. I sent an email around that I had received from NACO and, and it's, you know, I totally understand the reasons for it, but we haven't done our strategic planning, so it's hard to know what we want to do as a coordinated system of a Board to go into like local county, region, state, national stuff. And, um, the deadline application is on the 14th, so if anybody's interested in being part of that, I don't know what we do. I wanted to raise the issue.
Commissioner Thompson, I imagine you have looked at it fairly closely, is this reach out to ask for people that are interested nationwide to apply? Is there, is there a certain number of positions per region or is it nationally? What, what do you know about that?
I don't know anything about any kind of numbers or quota. Generally speaking, it's the more the merrier. I saw something there on resilience and I, you know, I'm interested in that. So, I may forward an application to be included in resilience. I've been doing some other things with NACO over the years, but the meetings are at convenient times and there's the press of other issues. So, again, when we're doing strategic planning, to be looking at how we integrate all of our activities together, but it'd be nice to have that national reach.
Are the, are the meetings primarily virtual meetings?
I'm pretty sure, but I don't know. I could make it up, but I would be making it up, so I'm not going to.
No, that's fine. So, so what you're saying is that you will be submitting an application because you're interested in the topic in particular, resilience?
Yeah, I'm about 80% sure.
Okay, well, thank you for letting us know, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Webb? Your turn. Come and say howdy, you're on mute. Still mute. There we go.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to mention that we had a Soil and Water Conservation District meeting this morning. And if you remember from the budget deliberations that we had, they had requested that our contribution from the county budget go from $6,000 to $10,000. And I said that I really wasn't willing to do that because they had gotten their request into us really late. And so, in their budget this morning, they had, they went back to the $6,000. And unfortunately, I couldn't get them to talk about what my concerns had been, et cetera. So, I have followed them with, followed that meeting up with a, an email to the Chief Staff Person and to Mike Sepa, who is the Chair of the District Board. I think I sent out the response to everybody. I'm always nervous about copying everybody on things, but I assume everybody received the Governor's News Release this morning about forming a Healthy Schools Reopening Council. And I responded quickly to, I think it was to, I actually did Jennifer Purcell and said, "I hope that rural schools will be included in this reopening conversation." They said they were, they were focusing on minorities. But I'm hoping that one of the good things that will come out of this pandemic is that we're going to shine a light a little bit maybe on our rural schools and talk about things like access to broadband for those students and the fact that it's not as easy for them to get a breakfast and a lunch if they're far away from their school in a rural area. And so, I just asked that, that a, that any consideration of reopening schools include rural schools and their special issues. I haven't heard back from anybody, but anyway.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Commissioner Webb. For myself, I heard a bunch of honking outside my, my house, this neighborhood today, and I thought, "What is that?" And it was a celebration of the high school graduates. They were, I think, driving in, in a series of cars, just driving around town. So, I just wanted to say congratulations, saw the, the graduates in Platte County and wishing, wishing them well. So, with that, let us go on to discussing the formal agenda. Does anyone have any comments about the agenda coming up? Any unanswered questions that they might have before we have the, the main meeting?
Chair Sullivan?
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, ma'am. I don't have any particular questions. I put in a call to Dave Diefenbach and I said, "You know, in times of COVID-19, the role that you play in public works of keeping county employees and the public safe in the way you maintain the cleanliness of the buildings is a big deal." And I hope that his input will be kind of noticed and included as we go forward. So, I just want to highlight the people who keep the building, the buildings clean matter.
Excellent point. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Well noted. Anyone else have any comments about the agenda or other comments? Okay, well, let's move down to, seeing none, let's move down to the topic of our work session today, which is the primary election update. Who would like to present on that?
So, Commissioner Sullivan, members of the Board. I'm going to go ahead and start off, give a little overview, and then Tracy's going to support me with all of the details, facts, and figures. I just want to provide a little context about the election process, just so everybody kind of knows. And I know that the Board knows this, but just in case there's anybody else listening, is that the elections process is really fundamentally a state process and each of the counties performs their role in actually, in really executing the state process. And so, when it comes to the types of ballot counters we use, when it comes to the other types of equipment, we, we are buying all of that based upon the requirements of the state. And so, it truly is a state process. And so, as I talk about that, it's a complicated process too. And as an example, we have 33 precincts here, but within those 33 precincts, we had, we actually had 138 different variations of the ballot. And so, it's not as though there's one ballot that is going out. There's, there's 138 different variations of that ballot that are based upon all the various special districts, who's on, who is actually on the ballot. And there was, based upon whether you were voting in the primary as an independent or Republican or Democrat. And so, it really is a complicated system. And part of the complication led to what we experienced in Precinct 22, which there are three splits in that precinct. And as updates were made to the district boundaries for a water district, it, there was an omission of the Commissioner, of the proper Commissioner District. And so, that led to the 438 ballots that were sent out that were not correct. I will say that this is a situation that, that does happen statewide. In my former county, we also had a similar situation happen. And so, when they do happen, A, we hope that we find out about it really early so that we can respond. And then, when we do respond, we coordinate with the Secretary of State's office. And in this case, we were able to get new ballots out, corrected ballots out to the voters. The ballots that were sent in before that were, were set aside so that we could see if they balloted the second or if they didn't. And if they didn't vote the second, then we counted their first ballot. So, the voter turnout in that precinct actually turned out to be high, and I think partly was that we probably got everybody's attention sending them two ballots. So, so, so there was a, a process that, that elections uses to, to make sure that only the second ballot, if it's returned, is actually counted. And if it's not returned, the second ballot, then the first ballot, if it was returned, is counted. So, 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 you know, it's always, you always want to have a flawless election, and I do want to say that upfront, that that's what the goal is. The goal is to have a flawless election, and I know that that's Tracy's goal also. And so, as we move forward, one of the things we're going to be working on is just those kind of, those checks and balances within this complex system to make sure that as we prepare these 138 different ballot variations, that they're correct. Because as I've stated before, elections is kind of the bed, bedrock of our entire system and the public has to have, you know, faith and, and trust in it. And so, that's something that, that we certainly take seriously. And then, real quickly, I want to talk about the, the timing of the counting on Election Day. This was the first time in my career that we've had an election during a pandemic. And I would venture to say, all of us can say that. And so, it was different, and part of the difference was, is that we did not use casual workers that we would usually use to process the election. We used regular county employees, including many that are on this phone call. And, you know, as a result, there was a decision made that on Election Night, that after 2:00 that there wouldn't be any more counting, and the reason was because of, of the regular county employees. 95% of the ballots had been counted prior to that, but the 5% that were remaining did not get counted until Wednesday morning. So, again, that was a decision really based upon COVID and the fact that we were supporting the, the process differently. Tracy and I have spoken since, and in November, we will be counting through the evening and we will count on Election Night. So, likely, we will still be using regular county staff, but those staff will be here counting into the evening. So, so we've made that adjustment going forward to the November election. You know, all in all, our numbers and our voting was done timely, that we have a certified election. I have to say that, you know, that elections did a great job, given the situation that we were in. They responded well to the error, and I just want to commend them for their hard work. This is not like any other year that I've ever been in. And so, so I do want to say that, but I also want to say that the expectation is, is that we have flawless elections, like I stated. And so, so we're going to be working on that to, to make sure we can attain that goal. So, Tracy is here, she can answer any of your specific questions about what happened, and I'm happy to answer any questions also.
Thank you, Don. I see Commissioner Nebiker has a question. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I have several questions. One is, why was the Sheriff not on the ballot?
So, I will answer that real quickly, then if, if I don't answer it adequately, I'll have Tracy. That was, we actually follow the Secretary of State guidelines, and their guidelines is that the Sheriff, Sheriff's race was to be on the general election in November. And so, it's not a discretionary decision that our Elections Office makes. That is a direction from the Secretary of State's office, and Tracy confirmed that, that with them as part of the process.
Thank you. My next question is, did something change because of the pandemic as to why the voters or the, that segment of voters was inadvertently moved to a split that didn't include the Commissioner's race? I, I don't understand what the environment was that caused this to happen. Thank you.
I'll let Tracy take that one. You're going to have to unmute yourself, Tracy.
It looks like Tracy's having trouble getting on. Her phone is showing, but it's not showing green.
So, I'm going to try to answer that question too. So, the split, the update that was taking place with the split didn't have anything to do with the pandemic. It was just updating a boundary with a water district. And, and as that was happening, they inadvertently changed the Commissioner District with that split. And so, it, that was really what it was, is they were updating that split and then in, in updating it, they inadvertently changed the Commissioner District.
When you say "they," what do you mean "they"?
It's the Elections Office, because the Elections Office maintains all of the data on, on all the boundaries. And so, they go in and they fix these splits, and these splits are why we actually have 138 different variations of the ballot.
I think I'm on now. Can you hear me?
Okay.
I sent a message to Teresa. Yes, that is exactly correct. We were working on dissolving, skipping on water district, working with them on their boundary lines back in September of last year. And that is how they inadvertently got moved out of the Commissioner Boundary of 2 and into 1.
I can see that if this were to have been a close race, it could make a big difference. So, what's to prevent this from happening in the future?
I think what is the prevention is that you just have all of the quality assurance processes documented so that you double-check, triple-check all the changes that are happening to these splits. And, and you just make sure that all the splits are, are accurate and reflect reality. And so, that's something we will be working on, is just to make sure that all of our processes of ensuring quality on those changes is intact.
Commissioner, Commissioner Nebiker, are you done with your questions? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Thompson, you have a question?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, this really points out how critically important the role of the county clerk is, and I'm grateful for everything you do right. It's really complex. We're agents of the state, it's their rules, and it's probably better that we don't give over our quality assurance to them, given their track record, with all due respect. On the other hand...
Yeah, and, yeah, sorry, Commissioner.
No, please go ahead.
I was just going to say, the, the quality assurance piece is ours, and we're going to own that and we're going to execute it, so.
Well, it's so complex, 130, I mean, I'm picturing layers and layers and layers and layers of logic. And I thought, well, how many households do we have to check to make sure that each registered voter is, is accurately subsumed in the proper category of all the, I mean, it just sounds mind-boggling to me.
Well, and, and honestly, that's where the election complexity is, is just maintaining all the correct splits. But I think Tracy can explain that.
Yes, that is exactly right. Each and every address is assigned a specific precinct and split within that precinct based on their different boundaries and districts that they are in and part of. Voting districts and non-voting districts, actually, we keep track of both when and if the district decides to go towards a taxing district. If it's a formed district, we keep track of it. So, yes, there's layers of things and we check every address that is put before us.
Follow-up question.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. So, when we're looking at measures, effectiveness measures, it seems to me that you're going to have a very complex task in calculating what's the staffing level that you need to assure what Commissioner Nebiker is pointing to, which is getting it right the first time. I mean, because everybody wants to get it right the first time, and there have to be enough people assigned to, to keep that process up to date, period, right? How, how do you get the outcome measures? How do we have the outcome measures we need? This is, I'm going to be really interested in looking at those, because Commissioner Webb talks often about, about the outcome measures. And so, trustworthy elections, it is, it's the foundational piece, very complex, need to have enough staff. How do you measure, how do you measure, how do you determine that? And how do you help your governing body assure that you're adequately staffed and funded to perform with a level of accuracy that inspires confidence? Sure, piece of cake. Okay, thank you.
Back.
I would, that's a very good concern, and what I have tried to do in the past and will continue to do is make, is check boundary lines if and when they change. A lot of times, they don't change. So, once it's in effect, good, it should stay good. With this one, it was just a matter of picking the wrong split. And, you know, I will be more careful with everything I move, if we move them.
I see Commissioner Webb has her hand up. But you're, you're still muted, Commissioner. Okay, there you go.
So, is there some kind of a software program that we use to do these delineations?
Well, we actually use our election system as through the Secretary of State's, it's Oregon Centralized Registration. And I use that in conjunction with our web maps, with our precincts' boundaries. And so, I will sit down with the precinct map, the web maps, and then OCVR with an address list and go through them that way.
I see. But it's, it's a state system basically is the fallback?
That holds, that holds the election information, yes, Commissioner.
So, by the election, do you mean the registration data for people?
That is correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Nebiker has a comment? Thank you, Commissioner Nebiker.
I know, I'm probably asking the same question, but I'm trying to understand. So, did anything change before the election from past elections? And if so, what was that that caused this error?
Commissioner Nebiker, what had changed was, when I was looking at skipping on water district, I found a group of homes that were listed as in that district. However, they were actually not to be in part of that district, based on working with assessment and tax. Their tax code does not include that. So, I was taking them out of the skipping on water district so that they would have an accurate boundary when they were looking at dissolving. Because there are, there is a section that has both Commissioner 2 and skipping on water, and then there's a portion that has just the Commissioner 2 and non-skipping on water. And then, there's a portion that has Commissioner 1 with skipping on water. Hope that makes sense.
Okay, thank you, Tracy. And Don, you had unmuted yourself a few minutes ago. I know that you've already addressed that, because like you say, we want a flawless election. And I know from my own personal experience, from a candidate's point of view, it's, it's a, it's a process that certainly grabs all of your attention, so.
Yeah, and I, I think that, you know, I'll just reaffirm that it is our goal to have that flawless election, and we will support Tracy and, and her staff in every way we can to make sure that that happens.
And I think that, I appreciate all the hard work that was done, especially with the staff stepping in and during this time of COVID. And so, would it be fair to say that sometime before the, excuse me, the November election, perhaps we'll get another report?
Yes, we can certainly come to, to your Board before the general election and give you an update. And then, of course, after the election, we will do the same.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds good to me. Does anyone else have any other questions about this topic? Okay, thank you. And our County Manager would like to give a brief report on, on the Public Health Update. And we, we have also a potential for, well, we don't have a potential, it's going to happen, an executive session, but I don't know if it will, if that's something we will have time for during this work session or if that'll be at the end of our regular meeting. So, I will let our County Manager speak at this time. Thank you. Don, you're not, you're not unmuted.
Sorry about that. You probably enjoyed those few seconds of silence with me, so. But, so, we're in Phase 2, as your Board is aware, and then lodging has gone to the 60%. The good news is we haven't heard any real complaints. I have been fielding a few phone calls from some short-term rentals, just helping them understand, but they've all been supportive. So, I think that everything seems to be trending in the right direction. We, as of this morning, we were still at 46 active cases, but all 46 have recovered, and we haven't had a new case for some days. I think it's close to a week now. So, but obviously, public health is still, you know, ready to respond. Um, so, but obviously, public health, um, is still, um, you know, ready to respond as anything happens. Uh, there was a large outbreak down in Lincoln County, um, related to a seafood processor, so we've been watching that and, um, offering, um, some of our assistance to them. Um, but obviously that makes us, uh, that much more aware of what is still possible within Clotseth County. Um, and then one thing that we are working on and Monica's kind of leading this effort is to have conversations with our organization to, to talk about what the reopening might look like. Um, because we have a lot of diverse services, we have multiple buildings, and so we're working through that right now in a way that, that we can support staff, um, and have an approach that will work for the public and for staff, um, as we move forward. So we're still in the early stages of that process. Uh, we don't see any changes coming in the next couple of weeks, but I think we will have a plan, uh, to provide an overview to your board in, in the next week or so. Uh, so I just wanted to let you know that staff is working on that. And some of that, to Commissioner Thompson's point about, um, just how, how our buildings are, are clean, that's part of the conversation that, that we're, we'll be having with staff, because that's, that's just part of the new, the, the new reality. So, um, so then I wanted Monica to provide a quick overview of some of the CARES funding. As you know, there was some federal funding that came from, came from the federal government to the state and the state is now working with AOC, LOC, um, and others to figure out what, uh, what the most efficient and effective way of actually distributing that to the cities and the counties and the special districts. And so I'll let Monica provide a little overview of that.
Sure. So, uh, like Don said, we, um, submitted for CARES funding reimbursement and originally that was, uh, due on the 22nd and they extended it to the 29th. We submitted our reimbursement request on the 27th and, um, we haven't heard anything yet. Uh, we do know that they, that they were waiting until all of them got turned in, so that way they can, should, should any changes at Treasury occur with how the funds could be used, they hadn't made any promises to anybody, um, or evaluated anything. So they're currently reviewing them and at this point in time, they don't have an estimated timeframe with which they will be distributing those funds. And so, um, so fortunately, we're in a position that we're not relying on those to be able to, to continue to pay our bills and keep the lights on. Um, but the, as you all received probably from Gina Nickel at AOC, is the letter in regards to the conversation, um, in, to provide support in regards to how AOC would like to have those funds distributed. And, um, what's being proposed is, uh, on a population basis. And, you know, there's no easy way to try and come up with a distribution that's gonna work for every county. Um, and so this is, you know, the best allocation plan, uh, as to whether or not it will meet the county's needs. Um, that's difficult to say. They are proposing in that plan that no county would receive less than $250,000. Um, the kind of uniqueness of Clotseth County in regards to our population is, you know, we're a rural county that has a processing plant in it and those processing plants are what have been seeing spikes in the COVID cases. And so with those spikes in COVID cases comes increases in, um, COVID-related expenses. In addition, we're also a tourist-based, um, destination and so we get a lot of visitors from outside of our area coming here. And some of the difficulties with, again, trying to, um, deal with an influx of population of people who may or may not have been exposed and just trying to manage that. So we have a lot of unique circumstances, but again, like I said, there, there isn't really a perfect formula to be able to distribute these monies. And so I think the, the idea behind this is to try and alleviate some of the, um, some of the difficulties in regards to, to trying to, um, ask people to submit all of these reimbursements for all of these different expenses. And this is just a methodology based on population that would just perhaps get the monies out there a little bit sooner.
Okay, thank you. So in some ways, you, you've done all the work, we're just waiting to hear what the decisions are made.
We've, we've done all the work for what they call Phase One, which was the initial request of, um, expenses that we incurred from March, um, March 1st through May 15th. And so, so we're waiting to find out whether or not we will get the funds that, that were requested reimbursed during that timeframe. And what they're trying to look at now is the rest of those monies. So based on the amount, um, of, of the Phase One request, they're estimating that there was about $50 million in requests. And so now it's gonna be distributing, um, the other, the, the remaining of that, um, that CARES funding that the state received.
With, was there, um, has it been submitted, our concerns about having the seafood processing plants and the influx of, uh, visitors to our county? Was there any place on that paperwork that we could state that, those concerns?
Uh, well, it's, are you talking about, um, the, the reimbursement request form? Or are you talking about the template that they provided?
I'm not sure what, I just, I, I know that, uh, you, you talked about AOC wanting, what, what I got out of the, that those comments were that, um, as we know, all the counties are different and how do you make adjustments for those particular things that are, are true to each county? And in our county, it's tourism and, and seafood processing plant. Um, will those, will those issues be considered, um, when they make, make decisions about funding? Do you know?
If I can just, thank you. If I could just say real quickly that, um, so I just want to make, make clear the Phase One was on a reimbursement basis and that is what Monica submitted. So, so our actual expenses is what we submitted for. What they have decided though is that that may not, not work moving forward, because there may not be enough for, for a straight reimbursement. So they want to then migrate to a different meth, methodology for the Phase Two. And so knowing that there isn't enough resources to, to continue to do a straight reimbursement basis, I think we're, we are pretty resigned that there has to be some kind of a methodology that will not reflect total reimbursement. So I think what, what we're saying is that we hope we get our full reimbursement from Phase One and then, you know, Phase Two, since we know there's not enough money for full reimbursement, that, that, that we would suggest supporting the, the, the work AOC, LOC, and the Special Districts Association did with the special group and, and support going forward. Because at, at that point, any reimbursement is better than no reimbursement, so.
Okay, and so, um, again, there's two things. One, I, I'd like to once again thank, uh, Monica and, and her staff rather, and, and yourself too, Don, uh, the staff that worked so hard on getting all this, uh, these things in line for the reimbursement. I, I know that all the work that you've been doing on this is above and beyond the normal work that you're doing. And, um, I just wanna thank you for that. Um, and the other, the other thing is, uh, in terms of supporting AOC and, and is there something that the board, um, needs to do to, to help you with that?
So there is a draft letter, um, that was, uh, prepared by, by, by AOC and so we will share that with the board. Uh, I think you may have already seen it, but we will pretty it up and put it into the Clotseth County, um, format. And then we'll just do the, the usual process of sending it out. You can let us know whether you su- su- support it and then we will, um, send it out, uh, under the board chair's signature.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Thompson, you had a comment?
I do. Um, AOC has asked the district chairs to have listening sessions. So our, our listening session is next Thursday at 2:00 with the other commissioners in our district. So I assume AOC staff will be helping put that together, but I assume also that that's another opportunity for us in our district to share our common concerns, which is, it's great that staff has done all the work so that we can look at what we've already spent, but as we contemplate going forward, that's when our bigger squeeze is more likely to come. I mean, the seafood processing plant certainly is squeezed. Tourism, holy smokes. Who knows what's gonna happen? And, um, who knows what will be available going forward to reimburse us for actual expenses? Or alternatively, are there things that we could be doing beforehand that would mitigate, that we could also ask for, um, some kind of support from somebody? But this, it seems as though the next few days are gonna be critical in compiling that information so that we go forward as a county and then as a region to talk with AOC about those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any, any response? Well, thank you again for all the hard work you've done, Miss Steele and, and, uh, Don and your staff. So we have approximately a little over 15 minutes left before our, um, our next meeting. Uh, county manager, what would you suggest that, should we move into the executive session or should we wait?
I, I will defer to, to, to Monica on how long she thinks the executive session might take, so.
Um, I, it kind of depends on the number of questions, but I think that we should be able to do it in, in 10 minutes, but we would need to clear out some of the calls since we would be callers, since we would be going into executive session.
Okay, would you like to proceed with the executive session then?
Sure.
Okay. Um, all right, so Teresa, can you help us with what we need to do?
Yes, I'm gonna stop the recording.